Very good. This is the Red Hook Town Board meeting of November 10th, 2020. Would you be kind enough to join me in the pledge of allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States. To the red flag, for which it stands. May God, individualism, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you. I think I was out of sync with the rest of you this evening. For the folks at home, Matt, would you be kind enough to show the agenda for tonight, please? Okay, we have just a couple items we are discussing and perhaps entertaining a resolution to approve an open development area for the current property on Westview Lane off of Reed Road. The second item is a resolution to approve Local Law B. These items have been on our last couple of meetings. The agenda there, it's regarding updating qualifications and procedures for our building and zoning staff. We do have a little bit of correspondence this evening, and any public comments as well. This is the first meeting of the month, and we always start the first meeting of the month with the supervisor's report. And so, Matt, if you'd be kind enough to share that for the folks at home, and we can scroll down to page three. Very good, right there. That's good. This is for the period ending October 31st, 2020. We began the month with an opening balance of $5,656,469. We had receipts of a little over a million, a million forty-four thousand, most of which were account transfers. We had dispersments of $1,186,000, transfers also of $686,000. So, our net receipts were $357,000 and dispersments, $500,000. We have a net ending balance for the month of $5,513,589. You also have in your packet, as you always do, the town budget adjustments as prepared by Aunt Conway, the bookkeeper, and you have your monthly variance reports as well, as well as a up-to-the-minute status of our fund balances. Are there any questions regarding the supervisor's report? There was very little of particular note transactionally in October. Okay, if not, I would entertain a motion to approve both the supervisor's report and the budget adjustments. Is there a...
Approve.
Thank you, Bill. Is there a second?
Aye.
Thank you, Bill Hamill. Okay, all in favor? Jacob Testa?
Aye.
Christine Kane?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Next up, we have the town clerk's monthly report, as well as some abstracts. And Deanna, would you be kind enough to take over for that?
Okay.
I think you might be muted, Deanna. There we go.
I'm on. Okay. The town clerk's report for the period of October 1st to October 31st, 2020, the total shares remitted to the supervisor, $4,359.50. Amount paid to New York State Agriculture and Markets for spay and neuter program, $28. And the amount paid to New York State Department of Health for marriage licenses, $247.50. And the total state and local revenue, $4,635. $3,510 was money collected for garbage at the recycling center. And there are abstracts from July through October. To catch up, July 2020, the vouchers numbered 26,531 to 26,687 were processed in the month of July 2020 for $1,056,286.96. For August 2020, numbers 26,688 to 26,779 were $377,116.16. For September 2020, numbers 26,780 to 26,914 were $493,264.88. And October 2020, 26,915 to 27,018 were for $252,347.41.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there a motion to accept the clerk's report?
So.
Thank you, Christine. And a second, was that Bill O'Neill?
No, it was Bill Hamill.
Bill Hamill. Thank you, Bill Hamill. All in favor? Jacob Testa?
Aye.
And Bill O'Neill?
Aye.
And myself. Okay, thank you very much. Announcements. Before we get started, there's only one or two announcements that I have. I just want to take a moment to acknowledge and to thank all the election workers. This year in particular, it was a challenging year with the pandemic, and we greatly appreciate the hard work of all the election workers with early voting and then extended, a very long day during Election Day under nerve-wracking circumstances. We really appreciate all the work that they did. And, you know, my understanding is here in Red Hook, everything went rather smoothly. We'd like to thank also the Red Hook Central School District and Bard College. They were kind enough to host additional polling sites sort of last minute, and we appreciate all that work associated with getting that together. And certainly, Duchess County Board of Elections for making sure that, you know, folks were in locations that provided enough space for social distancing. So, we appreciate everyone's efforts. Tomorrow is Veterans Day. We typically have a wonderful ceremony at Abrams Park there, at Memorial Park. Unfortunately, because of COVID, once again, they're just having the VFW, a very private ceremony, a small ceremony during the course of the day. But certainly, our thoughts are with all the families of veterans and the veterans themselves for all the sacrifice that they've given all of us. So, for announcements, I think what we have is, we just wanted to give you an update because everybody's talking about the spike in COVID cases across the country, and we have seen an increase in our area. Obviously, nothing like what some other states are dealing with. But the, you know, percent of positive tests are in fact now above 2%. And, you know, the number of cases, I think yesterday was 40 cases. They are increasing, so we would like to, you know, keep you up to date on the information. We'll put this on the website. Of course, we would encourage you to take all precautions, social distancing and mask wearing in order to slow down the spread. I'm sure you've heard on the news that there seems to be some positive indications coming out, at least about one potential vaccine. But it's going to be, you know, several months before many of us are able to partake in that. So, stay in touch with us on our website, redhook.org, and we'll keep you posted as to resources associated with COVID. That's all I have for announcements. Does anybody else have any announcements they'd like to make? Okay. All right, public comment period. We did get one public comment from, actually from Johanna Moore, and it is Johanna's husband, Bill Moore, who does the wonderful ceremonies for us, the VFW. I'm going to save her public comments for later correspondence because it's all related to the topic of the public art, and so we'll combine that into one conversation. Let's begin with agenda item number one, and that is the open development area question. If you were with us for the last couple of meetings, there's an application from a family who owns several lots on a private driveway, and they are looking to have that driveway shared in the development of one of those lots. And if so, potentially, that could put it over our limit of four lots serviced by a common driveway. These lots were created prior to any zoning, 1970, and so therefore, it could be said that it's grandfathered. So, we have discussed the application. We do have some seeker work that we need to do. And Chris Shaw, would you like to walk us through that, please? If you are with us. Okay, you're muted.
Matt, could you please scroll down to the Part II Impact Assessment, which is a little bit farther down? We'll start with that. There we go. Okay, so we previously, we have a short form that was submitted with the application that we reviewed. And so, this is the proposed response to that in the short form to review the potential impacts. This is a single house proposed to be constructed on an existing parcel of land. It's not a subdivision. It's a change in the proposed access to a town road. So, the proposal is that all of these items would be considered to be small or moderate impact. It's based on the information that we have in front of us. And there's a proposed Part III, which indicates that the ODA would allow a building permit to be issued for a structure. It'll be a residential structure to be constructed through a right-of-way to, it would not have a significant adverse environmental impact because it would be an insignificant ground disturbance and not result in a significant increase in the previous surface area. And if the property owner were to access the property directly from Reed Road, then they wouldn't need an ODA and wouldn't be subject to further approval. So, the increased use of the existing drive would not have a significant environmental impact. So, that is the proposed review of that issue. And there is a resolution for consideration as to the seeker matter just before that. Matt, if you want to scroll back to that. The seeker resolution. Thank you. And that identifies the request and indicates that back in April, we classified this as an enlisted action when we referred it to the Planning Board, that the Board has reviewed the EAF and the criteria that are considered and determined to adopt a negative declaration. So, that's the substance of that resolution.
Very good. Any comments on the seeker portion of it? I guess I would say that by encouraging perhaps the sharing of this pre-existing driveway and not forcing the creation of a new driveway out to Reed Road, there could be environmental benefits. Other thoughts before we go and entertain the seeker resolution?
Well, I think you're correct because the reason for this is it's difficult to access the property from Reed Road so that if you had to put a driveway in, there's blasting and other things involved. So, using an existing driveway, Westview Road, makes more sense from the environmental point of view.
Let me try to encourage, limit the number of cutouts onto roads within a, you know, a small tangent area.
Right.
Any more thoughts? Deanna, what resolution number would this be?
55.
Okay, if not, I make a motion that we approve Resolution Number 55 dated November 10th, and it's adopting a secret determination of non-significance for the establishment of an open development area pursuant to Town Law 280A. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Christine. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor? Jacob Testa?
Aye.
Bill Hamill?
Aye.
Bill O'Neill?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Okay, and then we are now in front of us was Resolution Number 56, and that would be to approve the open development area pursuant to Town Law 280A for lot 6373-00793859, fronting on Reed Road. And essentially, what the resolution does is to approve this ODA would be just for this one lot. And then, if they wanted to consider any further, they would have to then come back in front of the Planning Board and the Town Board. I think at which point, I don't know that we would be so inclined if there were new subdivision being created on those existing lots. But this resolution does not approve of that. It only approves of this particular instance.
Matt, can you scroll up a couple sentences on the resolution? Okay. All right. And Robert, can you just reference the ex parcel number you read out before?
Yes. Yeah, I do see that there's in the resolution, we have...
I think it's a different number.
It's a different number here. 793859, fronting on Reed Road. Let's see, a letter of request has been submitted pursuant to the establishment of the ODA benefiting a 1.81 acre parcel located at 26 Reed Road identified as, and that has the parcel 776820 in the resolution. So, let's just refer to our materials, make sure we've got the right.
So, that, I'm looking at partial access right now, and that is the parcel that we're talking about. It's the one to the south of Westview Lane, 776820.
I think that's the right one. I just didn't know. So, the one that Robert read out was not the same number. So, I just wanted to make sure we have.
Oh, oh, the title got put on incorrectly. No, the one in the first paragraph is right. I'm sorry. That got added. I didn't see that.
No worries, Christine.
The title isn't right. The title isn't right. The paragraph is correct. That's the one that we...
Right, so.
And it looks like that's the number for the neighboring parcel.
Yeah, no, that's not right. It should be for lot 67300, exactly what it says in the first paragraph, 776820.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, can we just make that correction now?
Yeah.
Check it. The second paragraph is also...
The second paragraph as well needs to be corrected, I think, right?
No.
No.
No, that's the one for the neighboring parcel.
Okay, so that's, okay, so the title, the title picked up the wrong parcel number.
Right. I think that's what happened, right? Because this, the road is actually, goes on the neighbor's property.
Right.
Right. So, that was correct. The title just picked that up instead of the one in the first paragraph, I think, right?
Right.
So, we just have to correct the title. That's all.
Yeah, okay.
Christine?
Christine helping out Chris. Very good.
Right, so.
Christine's gonna stick together.
I think also, let's just make sure we capture it on the last page as well. Gets repeated.
Yeah, well, all the titles will have to change because that's copied out over to all the places.
Yeah, okay. So, let's approving the ODA for lot 637300776820, Westview Lane. And I so moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Christine. Further conversation, discussion? Okay. All in favor? Jacob Testa?
Aye.
Bill O'Neill?
Aye.
Bill Hamill?
Nay.
Nay, okay. Four to one. The resolution passes. Thank you, Bill. All right, next up on the agenda is a discussion. It's actually the resolution now to pass Local Law B. It's regarding updating the qualifications and procedures for building and zoning staff as we do more intermunicipal agreements. Our code requires those individuals to be residents of the municipality, and obviously, in many cases, they are not. So, we have had our input from the Planning Board. They have no objection to us passing Local Law B. I believe this would actually be called Local Law Number Two of 2020 now, upon passage. And this is Resolution Number 57. We just want to acknowledge that we did hold a public hearing. We did get input from county planning. It was a matter of local concern. Are there any questions on this? If not, I would put forward Resolution Number 57, authorizing the adoption by the Town Board regarding updating qualifications and procedures for building and zoning staff. And I so move. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Bill O'Neill. If there is no further discussion, all in favor? Bill Hamill?
Aye.
Christine Kane?
Aye.
Jacob Testa?
Aye.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, we just have a few more minutes of this rather short meeting. We do need to take care of some administrative work, as we acknowledged in previous meetings. We had a couple of resignations from the Planning Board, two individuals who have offered to stay on as alternates. And so, we have written word from Lisa Bascalo and from Callie Robertson. And so, what I'd like to do at this time is make a motion that we appoint both of those individuals as alternates to the Planning Board. Is there a second?
Before you proceed on that, I thought there were only supposed to be two alternates allowed on a planning board, and I thought there already was one alternate.
Charlie Lang is no longer an alternate.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. He was for quite some time out, but he is no longer an alternate. All right.
I seconded.
Second, thank you, Christine. Any further discussion? Okay, Jacob Testa?
Aye.
Bill O'Neill?
Aye.
Bill Hamill?
Aye.
Thank you very much. We had word yesterday, as a matter of fact, from Duchess County advising Duchessland Conservancy that the county has awarded matching funds through their Partnership for Manageable Growth Program for the purchase of development rights to plus or minus 60 acres known as the Brittany Hollow Farm. For the folks at home, if you're familiar with the Brittany Hollow Farm, it's at the southern entrance to the town of Red Hook. If you actually, once you're in Rhinebeck and you haven't even arrived at the town border, if you look to the west as you're coming up Route 9, you'll see those beautiful flats, those fields in the back. And that is all the fields that have been planted and harvested for many years by the Mosher family. And they also do the flowers. I'm sure folks have seen their flowers. Pick Your Own Operation, they have there off of 9 as well. And so, we had this application in front of us, and it's good to get this notice that the county will in fact be matching. Money is provided by Sina Hudson and also the town of Red Hook. So, good news there. All right, and then the last piece of correspondence, well, we had a public comment on correspondence. I just wanted to bring up again, as we spoke at our last meeting about public art, we received a letter from Susan Roemeyer, who wanted to discuss public art in light of a couple of murals that we've all read about being removed. And I thought perhaps, instead of sort of tackling that narrow question, that we might consider forming an arts and culture or culture and arts committee. We have many boards and committees in town. We don't have one, however, focusing on this important area of our community. And I thought it might be nice if we considered forming something like that as a way to sort of gather all of the activities going on in the community and maybe taking a look at how we might sort of show off those assets and those artists that exist in our community. So, I thought I put it out there for you to think about. I don't necessarily, you know, expect that you answer today, but I wondered if you had some thoughts on that?
I'd point out that the working group that Jacob and I co-chair, that is one of the topics that we are looking at, and we have sort of subgroups that are sort of looking at different issues and sort of cultural issues involving public art and other, is one of them. Correct, Jacob?
Yes. Yeah, I think that, you know, that's one thing that will be included as a part of that. If we want to have something that's more specifically related to that, like, that might make sense. I don't know if it's something that Robert was thinking might be a longer-term established sort of thing that is looking at public art, like, like a standing committee that looks at this moving forward, or if it's something that...
Well, not even necessarily public art. I mean, obviously, we would, we would be involved in public art projects within the township, but just having an arts committee really sort of trying to highlight and bring together a volunteer committee. When you think about all the committees we have, Economic Development Committee, Greenways and Trails, Recreation, it would seem to me that, you know, it might be, might be a nice thing that we highlight the art and the artists that we have here in our community. It can only help us, I think, as we continue to showcase what Red Hook has to offer and to try and, you know, build our, our community. I think, you know, many of us took advantage of places like Art Omai in Columbia County and Opus 40 over across the river there, especially during this pandemic. You know, folks want to get outside. They want to have opportunities to engage with art. And when you think about it, we really don't have a lot of public art in our community, and certainly, we don't have a lot of government interaction with the artists in our community. So, I put it out there for you, for you all to think about and see if you like to establish it. I know in speaking to Susan, she felt that there were many folks who wanted to be involved in, you know, in this topic. We did have an artist network. I think they were here for maybe... We did have an artist network, I think, where they were here for maybe six or seven years. There were quite a few local artists that were a part of that. I don't think that is up and running and functional now. So this might be a good opportunity to, to take stock of what we have and see if there's something as a town we can do to, to assist artists as well. Okay. Something to think about for, for next meeting. All right, well, that is, and I, I want to reference also that we did get some comments from Johanna Moore. And essentially, she was talking about the importance of, of public art and that she also would like to see a dialogue in our community, a very respectful dialogue about that and other things in our community. And we'll put her comments as, as part of the record as well, and we appreciate our sentiments and all that was done for our community as well. That's all I have tonight, folks. So what I'd, what I'd like to suggest is when, and looking at the calendar for the folks at home, our next regularly scheduled meeting would normally fall on November twenty-fifth, the night before Thanksgiving. And I somehow suspect that that's not something that you all would be interested in doing. So I'd, I'd like to suggest that we go ahead and cancel that meeting. And then we call a special meeting if we need to conduct any business right away. And for the folks at home, we'd like to wish you a happy Thanksgiving. It's going to be a very difficult Thanksgiving for, for many folks. And many folks won't be able to get together because of the pandemic. And so we want you to know we're, we're thinking about you during this time. Okay, anybody else have anything? If not, I'd like to make a motion that we close the meeting of November tenth. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Christine. All in favor? Bill Hamel?
Aye.
Bill O'Neill?
Aye.
Jacob Testa?
Aye.
Good night, everyone. Stay healthy.
Thank you.
Good night.
Thanks, Christine.